I think that'll just be here with me. Yeah, I think maybe thirty on the first one.
Yeah.
Because if we pick anything shorter than that, we're gonna have to pick a little longer.
Yeah, thirty's great.
Yeah, like, I think twelve seems like, uh, like, ten minutes, like, maybe five. B is Daniel. You, me. That one might need to be. Let me start from twenty. Twenty is, I think thirty.
I have twenty.
It is one o'clock on Tuesday, July fifteenth. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
It is Vice Mayor Landgra-- or, wait, sorry. Vice Mayor Wynn's turn to do the invocation and pledge of allegiance. So please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Holy Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Holy Father, help us to be quick to offer our hands to love, our hearts to love, and our hands to serve. Help organization to serve with dignity and empathy. We ask this through Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Next item is approval of the minutes. Any changes on the minutes? They'll stand approved as presented if there are no changes. Next item, item five, is public comment. This is time where we have anybody come forward and talk to us about any item that's not on the agenda. We give you five minutes and we ask that you please state your name for the record. Okay, moving on to six A.
Item six A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim July 2025 as Parks and Recreation Month for the city of Garden City. For sure.
I'll, I'll just read it. How's that sound?
Should we make a vote?
We'll make a motion, entertain a motion to approve the proclamation as presented.
So moved.
Is there a motion by Commissioner Andrews or a second?
I second.
Second by Commissioner Wynn. Is there any discussion? None being? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passed. I'll read the proclamation. It reads, whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Garden City, and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, promotes time spent in nature, and which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illness such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's. And whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles, it's a leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition services, and education. And whereas Parks and Recreation programming and education activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development. And whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism and attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, are essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And now therefore, I, Roy Cessna, Mayor of the city of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of July twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, as Parks and Recreation Month in Garden City and encourage all citizens to explore the opportunities available in our parks and recreation programs, services, and facilities. We are, we also extend our appreciation to all parks and recreation professionals for their essential service, which enriches our, the lives of the citizens of Garden City. Signed and sealed the fifteenth day of July, twenty twenty-five, Roy Cessna, Mayor. Do you want to say anything?
Apologize. I was prepared to say something before. Parks and Recreation are an integral part of everyone's life, and it gives us the opportunity to be with nature, which nature is, especially we discovered during the pandemic that nature is a healer. And it is a great opportunity for all of our citizens to get out and experience everything that Garden City has to offer with our Parks and Recreation system.
Then we'll get a, we'll get a photo right quick.
July is not the best time for Parks and Recreation.
Because they're all.
They're all working. Yes.
They're all repaid. Yeah, we're all repaid.
Item seven A.
Mayor Commissioners, item seven A, Fire Chief Ursick and Police Chief Pruitt will present the 2025 fireworks report. Chiefs.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Chief Pruitt and I are here to present the 2025 fireworks report. So they're patrolling the twenty-seventh through the fifth of July. We were able to create a thousand community contacts both through patrolling or stopping at the fireworks stand or just doing our drive-by and enforcing the rules and regulations. We were able to have a thousand contacts. Special thanks to the Communications Department and our PIOs, helping that education material that we were able to get blasted out on social media, get the rules and regulations, some of the comparable tips that we were sharing on it that grabbed a lot of interest. I had a lot of increased visibility in June, twenty-seventh through July fifth. Kind of hovering through the twenty-seventh through the first and then hitting hard first through the fifth to get the rules and regulations and the news and homes and fireworks. That was a combination of Community, the Communications Department, PD, and the fire side. Social media campaign combined twenty-six posts between the Communications Department and the PIO, the fire, and the PD. As you can see, a significant increase for the past three years with a good spike of three hundred and thirty thousand people that read our posts and share our comments. Out of the seven townships, fires resulting in fireworks this year was twenty-five. In Pitti County, fires that went with an undetermined cause was zero. Many had some self-reported injuries to the hospital. No transportation due by Pitti County. It was just a walk into the hospital. So three this year, a little out, but something that pertains.
On this slide, we had thirty-six fireworks violations reported with the PD.
Check in the microphone, please.
Sorry. Issued fourteen warnings through that. The disparity between the two, a lot of times we'll just get people that'll call in. They'll just say, there's people in this area shooting off fireworks. They don't want to give their name. They don't want to do anything. So a lot of times we'll just err and attempt to locate, obviously go, and then just make contact with folks in the area. Next slide.
And fireworks resulting, fireworks within the state limits, a significant decrease this year, sixteen from last year to five this year. Could have been due to the rain that night, making everything wet and no issues there. We did have a little tick up on the damage caused, which was four dumpster lifts that were in Boston City. So for three hundred to three twenty, a significant, not a significant increase, but a mild increase.
This next slide shows by day the violations and by day the fires that were reported. So if there's any questions on this slide, we have to answer. John can answer from the fireside. But it kind of breaks down what we experienced from the twenty-seventh through the fifth. This, this map shows kind of where the violations in the city were. The numbers indicate how many were in that area at that time. So really, nothing we can pull from this map. It was kind of all over. But it seems like people were, were pretty good up until the fifth, and we experienced quite a few. It was pretty loud that night.
To be expected. It kind of shows the fire, the fire-related fires by time. When it got dark, the fireworks increased. So they're seeing kind of a trend in the evening hours when it was dark. Some twenty-two-five considerations. Continue the social media education as it showed. It's a significant increase since we first before getting the information. So more messaging included where it changed the fireworks shows that we posted. Info about the sign or the city messaging system and maps that just are to prevent and allow maps that identify entry points in the three, three I, the exhibition park, and lawn, and maps to get the traffic flow however we're moving in at home. Fire units continue patrolling in conjunction with the police. This is fireworks enforcement and education on the fourth. It's proven itself over the past several years. We're continuing to do it. Fires, on the fireside, we staff all the road trucks and bring in the larger engines in-house. So we staff up. I think we go from a fourteen staffing to a seventeen, eighteen staffing. And it kind of increased from that eight to midnight up into the twenties, depending on how many trucks hit.
From the PD side, on the staffing, we have kind of two different events that we have to handle that day with the parade. And then we have to bring people back in for the fireworks show. This year with the fireworks show, we had the rain that came, and it came about ten minutes too early. A lot of people tried to leave during the heavy part of the rain, and then we had a lot of people trying to come back into the three I. So as far as the traffic control and that traffic flow down in that area, it was kind of a bestseller. But we got through it. But we've got some ideas for next year on, on trying to improve that just a little bit. We want to continue the education on fireworks through social media and broadcast channels. We also want to continue including different languages on the flyers that we hand out at the three I lot. We had a, definitely it was a good representation of Garden City down at the three I lot with the folks that were down there enjoying the fireworks show. And then we really don't have any, any recommendation on it. For us, it really doesn't change when the discharge dates to the dates of sale. It's something that we're gonna have to deal with. I think we've got to the point where we have a plan in place. And so whatever decision is made by the governing body, we can support it. And we'll kind of, we have a couple of videos that we want to show, just kind of talk through a little bit of, it's gonna be a divisive topic, no matter what side you're on. Some people, half of the community loves the Fourth of July and the other half don't like it. Whether it's the wish or the, or the, or the. So the videos, you can see, obviously it was right during the rainstorm that was going through. But those videos kind of illustrate, people are doing exactly what we want them to do. They're in the middle of the street. They're before eleven o'clock. They aren't putting their debris and damage from the fireworks into dumpsters until the next day. They're cleaning up after themselves. So, but it's one of those things where on the flip side of that, these videos were supplied by a community member that was not very happy with what was going on in her neighborhood. It's something that I think as a city and as an organization, we're gonna have to deal with every year, and we have a plan in place. We can actually not plan with what we have. So, pending any questions?
So I do have a question. So several residents were asking, so what time of the year do they need to come in order to encourage? May I explain? The, the sale could actually happen a lot earlier and the, and the fires and the discharge could happen later. But, and that we, this is what we had decided for the last couple of years. But what, at what time of the year do they need to come to make their voices heard to both the city and the county? Because they always say, well, it's already been a done deal. And I said, yeah, because the decision to, when you're gonna do the fireworks, or whenever you're gonna do the dates, is made way before July, so.
Yeah, so waiver, the resolution and the waiver board that you're done at the end of April, first of May.
So they, so end of April, first of May. So if they want to come and make their voices heard to both the county and the city, that's probably what they need to do. Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Just wanted to thank, I know down our neighborhood, they were shooting them off after eleven o'clock. And one of the fire trucks drove by and just said, you know, it's after eleven, and they shut it down and, you know, just said, thank you, and were really polite. But it was just a nice reminder and having, having you guys out and about. So thank you and good job on what you guys always do this time of the year. I know it's stressful for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Items seven B through seven H are all department reports. If you have any questions on those, staff would be glad to try to answer them for you.
Employment's looked good again at, at the airport, so hopefully have a record year as we're going.
All right. I think we're ready for item eight. Meetings of note. If any require RSVPs, please do those through the, through the city clerk's office. Item nine is the appropriate, go ahead.
The reason that we have a joint meeting on the seventeenth. Separate it with the county.
The seventeenth of, of August or the seventeenth of July?
Of July. I saw it on the.
I've not received, I've not received any notification, so.
Unless I miss.
No, like, this Thursday?
Yeah.
No, we do not have a joint meeting. We'll try to find, we'll get with you to try to find where that was posted and see if we can get that pulled down. I will say we do have a, a fifth Tuesday this month. And Chairman Schultz is going to present the sales tax presentation to the city commission and, and also of kind of whoever's viewing on Facebook and Channel Eight for that as well. All right. I think we're ready for item nine A, the appropriation ordinance. And if approved, it would be ordinance number twenty-five ninety-one dash twenty twenty-five A.
I move reapproved appropriation ordinance number twenty-five nine dash twenty twenty-five A.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on that item? None being? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item ten A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds for a sales tax exemption for a residential apartment building at the request of Garden City Partners LLC, Garden City Partners One LLC. And if approved, the resolution number would be three two zero five. And is.
Mr. Johnson would love to be called in on this, if you don't mind.
Hello?
Dennis, this is Matt Allen, city manager for the city of Garden City. We're live at a city commission meeting here in Garden City. We're at the agenda item of interest to you. Can you confirm that you can hear me okay?
I can confirm I can hear you, yeah.
All right, and we can hear you good too. So with that, we've introduced the item and I'm going to turn it over to our staff member to continue the presentation. Daniel?
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. On February seventh, twenty twenty-three, the city commission adopted resolution number three zero zero one dash twenty twenty-three, allowing the city to submit an application for modern income housing project on behalf of Hocke Development LLC. The property is generally located at eighteen oh one Palace Drive, and the developer was awarded $2 million in NIH ARPA grant funds and $1.2 million in Kansas Housing Investment Tax Credit Funds. On June seventeenth of twenty twenty-five, the city commission approved an amendment with Garden City Partners One LLC regarding the current scope of the project, which includes forty-eight units in the first phase with the ability to do another phase, a phase in the future. As the project has evolved, Garden City Partners One LLC has requested a sales tax exemption for the cost of building materials related to this particular project. There are two alternatives before you this afternoon. One, the governing body may approve the resolution as written. Or two, the governing body may not approve the resolution as written and provide staff with alternative direction. Staff recommends the governing body approve the resolution as written, and there is no fiscal note associated with the approval of this item. If the project is awarded, or if the resolution is granted, the project would be able to purchase eligible materials without having to pay sales tax. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. We also have Dennis Johnson, who is one of the partners with Garden City Partners One LLC. So I know he would be happy to answer any questions related to the project as well.
Any questions on this item? Entertain a motion then for resolution thirty-two oh five dash twenty twenty-five.
I move that we approve resolution number thirty-two zero five dash twenty twenty-five, allowing the governing body of the city of Garden City to issue taxable industrial revenue bonds in approximate principal amount of $10,295,000 for the purpose of purchasing, acquiring, construction, furnishing, and equipping a residential apartment building and related space as all located in the city of Garden City, Kansas.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
There's been a second. Any other discussion on this item? None being? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dennis.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I appreciate that.
Me too. Go ahead. Item ten B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance rezoning from R one, single-family residential district to R three, multiple-family residential district for the property generally located at seven oh six West Emerson Avenue. If approved, this would be ordinance number three zero one eight dash twenty twenty-five.
Good afternoon. Zimmerman Properties LLC is requesting to rezone the property generally located at seven oh six West Emerson Avenue from R one single-family residential district to R three multiple-family residential district. The property is currently vacant and contains 1.3 acres. The applicant intends to combine with the property to the west, which is zone R three multiple, multiple-family residential district for proposed multifamily residential development. The developer is proposing two three-story buildings with each building having twenty-four units, ranging from two to three bedrooms with two bathrooms. If awarded, the developer intends to use the Kansas Housing Investor Tax Credits, or KHITC. This property will need to go through the replat process and site plan review process before any building permits can be issued. The proposed land use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan and future land use map has this property categorized as residential potential. R three multiple-family residential district would be the most appropriate zoning district for a multifamily development. The governing body may make its recommendations and state its findings according to the criteria in section twenty-seven point zero four zero that lists listed in here, staff memo. Items stated apply. There are three alternatives before you today. One, the governing body may adopt the planning commission's recommendation by approving the proposed ordinance. Two, the governing body may override the planning commission's recommendation by a two-thirds majority vote. Or three, the governing body may return the recommendation to the planning commission with a statement specifying the basis for the governing body's failure to approve or disapprove. And staff recommends the governing body adopt the planning commission's recommendation and approve the proposed ordinance, and there's no fiscal cap to this.
Any questions? Entertain a motion on this ordinance.
I move reapproved ordinance number thirty eighteen dash twenty twenty-five.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
Item twelve A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a master service agreement with MKEC Engineering, Inc. Mike?
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. MKEC Engineering is an engineering firm that offers a variety of engineering services. The services provided include power delivery, transmission, and distribution design, substation design, equipment protection, and control. MKEC requires a master services agreement to be in place prior to providing any type of engineering services for us. If the MSA is approved today, this will allow the city to request pass order engineering pricing for projects for the aforementioned electric services. Alternatives, the governing body may approve the master services agreement with MKEC. For number two, the governing body may choose not to approve that agreement. Staff recommends the governing body authorize the mayor to sign a master services agreement with MKEC Engineering. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mike?
No, I, I did ask Mike earlier, as far as when you use them, then basically they become one of the, this gives him the opportunity to be able to bid for projects. Is that what you were explaining?
Yes, that's correct. And for whatever reason, we wanted to hire them to do a design project, they'll want this in place first. So same as we have with a couple of other electrical engineering firms that we use.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move reapproved the master service agreement with MKEC Engineering.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The remaining new business items are executive sessions, none of which we expect action to be taken following. So with that, we can turn our eyes to the consent agenda. And if approved, and if nothing is to be pulled off and discussed further, the appropriate motion would be to approve item thirteen A through thirteen K.
Just want to make sure there's nobody from the community to discuss any of the nuisance violations that are on the consent agenda? Then entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I move reapproved items thirteen A through thirteen K.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Wynn?
Yeah, I had a very quiet two weeks, so actually no commission report for me.
Okay. Commissioner Ortiz?
So I attended the state fire marshal's presentation on Tuesday, last, I'm sorry, last Thursday. And they're talking about the updates and, and things that they need to do up in the state fire marshal's office for codes. It was interesting to hear them as far as their side of that presentation needing to upgrade the codes from two thousand and six to the current code, which is twenty twenty-four. I believe there's some good language in there that kind of cleans up the, the gray areas a bit, so. And I do understand that they are going to communicate with a lot of the cities in the, in the districts to kind of coordinate that portion update and then try and, and make sure that all of that language kind of jives with the city ordinances and local codes, codes and things like that. So I'm anxious, or I'm interested to hear on that collaboration with the city when that goes further. Danielle Burke, Matt Allen, were you there? I don't know if Matt was there.
I was not.
Okay, Danielle Burke was there. Some of the other city staff was there too, so they, they heard everything that I heard. So I think it's a, it's a good collaboration on their part to kind of get things moving forward. So look forward to those changes and upgrades for that. Other than that, that was all, Fourth of July was great. Yeah, I didn't, I, I like the fact that the community kind of cleaned up after themselves. That was, that was an enlightenment to see also in the community as far as the, you know, the years passed, there's just been firework debris everywhere. And so this year I didn't notice a whole lot of that. But thank you to the community members for doing that and getting it, following the, the rules and regulations there. So, and yeah, I, there was always a work in progress to get that thing, to get Fourth of July cleaned up. I know it's a long holiday, but there's a lot of people that like to celebrate that. I know it's a long holiday, but there's a lot of people that like to celebrate that year, that holiday as well. So with that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Andrew?
So I just want to highlight, if you would like to have input as far as concerning the fireworks, and you have something to say, and I really appreciate all the people who call and text and email and also talk to me in person concerning fireworks, but I think it's really important that you as residents and citizens of Garden City, I know as a city commission, we really would like your input and for you to come and speak. And so that way, you know, we can either know that we're doing the things that you want us to do and that we're moving the city forward and that, and I love the people celebrating too, and I'm like you, I think most people honor the 11 o'clock time, and if they didn't, I was already asleep, so I didn't hear anything. But I'm really excited about the, also the opportunity. I know that, you know, after we had toured the Finney County Humane Society, the Building Humane Center, and I noticed that a lot of people have now really that the idea of helping find lost pets, and so that was really brought home by a lot of people. We were actually able to put one on there, and so I do think that's a really, it's Finney County is the lost pets, I think the Facebook, but I mean, I know that's something that's really important in the way the community comes together, and I really appreciate how many people look for people's lost pets. So we had one in our backyard for a while, and I was, we were not going to adopt it no matter what, so, but I knew that the shelter was full, so I was just praying that their owner would come and get them, so, and they did. But, so I think it's exciting, and it's just a way to see the community pull together. I also just want to say, just what a wonderful opportunity we have. We've had incredible rain, and I know that people's yards and weeds, and I know that the city really is patient about that, and if you need help, I know there's lots of people that do that mowing and do those extra jobs, so either ask for, ask the city for a list of those people, or ask your local church or your place of faith also, so, and that's all I have.
Commissioner Landgraf?
So I was able to be part of the Vets for Veterans 4th of July prayer, and I just want to say it's really great seeing the turnout there, and just want to say thank you to everyone who played a part in making that happen. Just lots of floats, lots of people there, really great thing to have. Also, met with the Main Street America Focus Group yesterday along with other commissioners, was great being able to have dialogue and discussion regarding our downtown. Then finally, I just want to remind folks that the Finney County Fair is coming up July 19th through the 26th. Just want to encourage people to go out there, watch the different events, and just go see all the hard work and effort a lot of these kids put into their projects.
Thank you. Just want to thank again the fire department, police department, being out on the 4th of July, and this year it seemed, it didn't seem as active as in years past, but I think people kind of stayed, you know, with all of the marketing that we've done and everything kind of, people have stayed within those timeframes of the limits of setting off fireworks. I know there's a few that are out there that I like to push it, but overall, I thought the community did a really good job, and I did notice, too, like Commissioner Ortiz, you know, people did have their fireworks kind of on the side, and then they cleaned them up like the next day, and not a lot of litter. I did have somebody ask me about, we did seal the streets, and somebody asked me the other day about when we were, when was the city going to street sweep the rock up off the streets, and what were we going to do with that rock?
Sure. Thank you. The plan is the street department will just come and start sweeping up the streets that we chipped steel on the 21st. Take two or three days to get all that done. When they're done with that, they take that material down to our storage facility, and it ends up getting mixed with some other recycled asphalt and some other materials, and we put that right back into the aisles. So that's the plan on the 21st, if weather permits.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And again, you know, good numbers on the airport. Always like to, you know, kind of keep on track with that, but yeah, looks like we'll definitely set a record for implants here at the regional airport. On that, we will turn our attention back to our executive sessions.
12B, staff's requesting the governing body consider an executive session pursuant to KSA 754319B6 pertaining to preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property. We would ask that this one be set for 30 minutes and include myself, Assistant City Attorney Dummermuth, and Assistant City Manager Danielle Burke.
I move we enter into executive session pursuant to KSA 75-4319B6 pertaining to preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property for 30 minutes, being at 1:35, to include City Manager Matt Allen, Assistant City Manager Danielle Burke, and Assistant City Attorney Jimmy Dummermuth.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Commissioner Landgraf made the second. Is there any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Go into executive session. Thank you, everyone.